Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021. The time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the fact that the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public announcements. Alex Hager, do you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of public announcements. I want to congratulate the Abington High School football team on their impressive and hard-fought 2021 season. The players and coaches continue to persevere to excellent heights that make our town the mighty Green Wave. I know my fellow selectmen and I, I know my fellow selectmen share the same sentiment when I say, "Abington is incredibly proud of you." A special appreciation to the Abington Cam team who broadcasts all Green Wave sports games so our residents can cheer on our teams, and to the Green Wave football commentators, Sean Riley and Kevin Whalen, for providing the play-to-play, play-by-play action for Abington football. As an Abington drama alumni, to the Abington High School drama students, congratulations on your stunning performances of Elf the Musical. Through all your hard work and dedicated rehearsals, you delivered enchanting Christmas joy to the community through the magic of theater. Bravo to the fantastic cast and crew of Elf the Musical. Lastly, I want to send everyone my warmest wishes to you and your families for a very safe, healthy, and holiday, jolly, merry Christmas this year. To quote my favorite Christmas book of all time on the, on the meaning of this holiday season, "And the Grinch with his feet," excuse me, "and the Grinch with his greets feet, Grinch feet ice cold in the stove, stood puzzling and puzzling. How could this be so? It came without ribbons. It came without tags. It came without packages, boxes, or bags. And he puzzled, and he puzzled, 'tis his puzzler was sore. Then the Grinch thought of something he hadn't before. What if, what if Christmas, he thought, doesn't come from a store? What if Christmas, perhaps, means a little bit more?" Take this festiveest time of year to treasure the most meaningful matters of our lives, each other. Cherish each, cherish each who, and be sure to spread joy, love, and laughter this Christmas. To all the boys and girls in Abington, I hope Santa Claus is good to you. I promise the Grinch will not steal your toys. May all your days be merry and bright, Merry Christmas, and have a happy New Year. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for announcements.
Thank you, Alex. Mike, anything?
No, nothing tonight.
Alex Bezanson?
I can't top that.
Tim?
Not even gonna try.
All right, I guess it's on me. Just wanted to remind everyone that the Abington is Lit Tour is going on right now. This is an event that is going on now through December 26th. It's a family-friendly event to short and brighten your holiday season. This is hosted by the Abington Celebrates and the Abington Strong Fund. Along the tour, there is a drop-off location in the Abington Police Department lobby for Abington food pantry donations. But anyways, get out there if you want. Abington is Lit. If you go on Abington Celebrates on their Facebook page, it's pinned to the top of their page, I believe is a map of all the locations. You can drive around the town and see all the Christmas lights, and I think you can, is there voting on it? Is there, or something? But, anyway, it's going on now through December 26th, so be sure to take a look and give them a like or go out there and see some lights.
We'll get a link for that on our website.
Yeah, you want to put it up on the website?
Sure.
Okay. Public comments, is there any public comments on the agenda tonight right now? I'm seeing none. Public appointments, 6:40 PM, the time is now 6:40 PM. We did have a request for a Class II license for Damian Bennett doing business as Bentec LLC with business to be conducted through the internet only with no vehicles to be parked on the property. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to reopen that hearing.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We did get notification from Mr. Bennett that he was not able to attend tonight. He is still gathering some paperwork for us, so I think at this point we should probably continue it until our next meeting, which would be January 10th. Scott?
January 10th.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till January 10th.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. It's continued till January 10th. First up on the agenda is the Police Department badge pinning ceremony for Officers Michael Walsh, Hency Kalice, and Vanessa Miranda. I will invite the Police Chief Dave Palpap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. I appreciate your time. As the Board is aware, the Abington Police Department has had several new hires over the past year. These officers have all graduated the Police Academy, been sworn in, and have been serving their community. Unfortunately, due to COVID restrictions that were in place prior to, there was no formal badge pinning ceremony. I'd just like to take a few moments tonight to introduce these officers to you formally. First officer I'd like to invite up is Officer Hency Kalice. Officer Kalice, if you mind coming up. Officer Kalice is 37 years old. He's been an Abington resident since 2016. He's married with three children in the Abington school system. Here tonight is his wife, Suze, his two sons, Hency and Hency, and his daughter, Alyssa. Hency obtained a bachelor's degree in political science and international studies from Bridgewater State University. He's fluent in Haitian and French and can read and write Spanish. He started with us in January of 2020. Prior to joining the Abington Police Department, he served in private security, working contracts for the Department of State, serving in the Diplomatic Services Bureau. He's currently a member of the Massachusetts National Guard and has been serving the Commonwealth in our country for the last 10 years. Graduated from the Randolph Police Academy in October of 2020. His hobbies include kickboxing, literature, poetry, philosophy, and soccer. At this time, I'd like to invite the members of Hency's family to come on up. And normally, we would have an oath taken before the badge pinning, but much like all of our lives due to COVID, we've had to adjust a little bit, so we're going to skip with the oath tonight and get right to the badge pinning. At this time, I'd like to invite Representative Sullivan to say a few words in the presentation of the citation.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you to the Board for allowing us to come this evening, and thank you to Officer Kalice's family for being here and for supporting him and to serve our community here in Abington. I know you've been on the force for quite a bit of time, and this is, you know, a little bit of a delayed pinning ceremony, but unfortunately, like Chief said, during COVID and other protocols and regulations that were in place, we weren't able to do this, and it's an honor to be here. This is actually my first pinning ceremony in Abington for a police officer, so it is definitely near and dear to be able to do this for, for you, for your family, and for the community here in Abington. So I do have a citation here from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Officer Hency Kalice in recognition of becoming a sworn law enforcement officer with the Abington Police Department in your commitment to public safety. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 13th day on December 2021, signed by the Speaker of the House and offered by your state representative, myself, Allison Sullivan." Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to invite up Officer Michael Walsh. Officer Walsh is 27 years old and an Abington native, grew up and graduated from Abington High School in 2013. Officer Walsh obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Southern New Hampshire University, started employment with the Abington Police Department in February of 2021, came towards his previous experience, much like Officer Police in private security, working at Tufts Medical Center. Graduated from the Randolph Police Academy in July of 2021. His hobbies include exercising, playing hockey, and playing basketball. Here tonight to pin him is his girlfriend, Megan. Megan?
You'd think they'd make those Velcro by now.
No pressure.
Again, I'd like to invite Representative Sullivan up for the citation.
Thank you, Chief. I would go through the spiel all again, but I do want to thank you and your family and your girlfriend for being here this evening and for your service to the town of Abington. It is an honor to be here to be able to offer you the citation from the House of Representatives. The House of Representatives be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Officer Michael Walsh in recognition of becoming a sworn law enforcement officer with the Abington Police Department in your commitment to public safety. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 13th day of December 2021 at the State House of Boston, signed by Speaker Ronald Mariano and offered by your state representative, myself, Allison Sullivan. Congratulations and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I felt it was important to have a badge pinning ceremony for these officers. They deserve it, and thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
One more round of applause for these officers.
Do you want to, she's going to go take pictures. Do you want to just go right to the joint meeting with the Board? Or do you want, she's going to take some photos down there before she can go?
Okay. So...
Want to approve the minutes real quick?
What's that?
Prove the minutes real quick.
Yeah. So next on the agenda is the vote to approve the minutes of November 22nd, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, just before we finish with the motions, there was one correction that I just wanted to make. Was it bullet point nine, Mr. Hagerty would like to, would like the water report on PFAS on the website. I was the one who requested that.
Which bullet point is it under?
Number nine.
Okay. The Board's go with that. Alex, do you want to continue with your motion, amended motion, or?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
We got a vote on the amendment first.
Yeah.
All right, so want me to make the motion?
Yeah, make a motion for the amendment.
Yeah, yeah, just correct that in the form of a motion.
Sure, sure. I'll, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting November 22nd, 2021 in bullet point nine. From Mr. Bezanson to Mr. Hagerty would like to report the water on the PFAS on the website.
Okay, it's motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment change? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes, amended minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So we're still, I think, a couple minutes behind on the webpage review, so if the Board doesn't mind, we will move forward to the joint meeting with the Board of Sewer Commissioners to appoint to the Sewer Commissioners to fill the vacancy until the next town election. Is the Board all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. So invite the Sewer Commissioners who is present.
Please pull the chair up to the table here.
You just want to come right up to the table, I'm sorry. Just want to pull the chair right up. This will be the same as the Board of Health.
Hi, guys.
Do you have, if you guys want to open your meeting?
We're in session.
Oh, you're in session, okay. Okay, so now, again, we are now in a joint meeting session with the Board of Sewer Commissioners for the appointment to the Sewer Commissioners to fill the vacancy until the next town election. In your packet, I believe, we have one person that had put in, I believe?
And just for the record, he checked in me and he had some, opened his mouth there and said, "So it won't be here." I'm serious, but he can't.
Okay. I think there was only one applicant, right?
I believe, yes, Scott. There was the only one that put in?
Correct. Only one that was received in a timely manner.
This will be a term that will run until the next election.
So this next town election in April?
Until April, yeah. Okay.
So...
So that one person's Bill Cormier? I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Cormier to, to fill the spot until the next town election. I'll second him.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from either Board?
For this Board, I'll make a motion to appoint Bill Cormier to the Sewer Commissioners. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
So it has to be a roll call vote for appointment?
I don't see why, no.
No? Okay, perfect, okay, so...
Unanimous?
All right, so, I'm still thinking. Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Board, from the Boards? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Who's that?
Present.
So we have four with one voting present. Okay.
For a term to run until the next election.
Correct, till April 2021. Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sewer Commissioner's 4-0.
Now we have John Stone here. Let's go right on to the parking issue.
So, as we are still waiting on the webpage review, I did want to, while we have John Stone here, if we could go to the next agenda, right, and with just a discussion on the Lake Street parking area. I think this is one that you wanted on the agenda, Alex Hagerty?
Yes.
And we do have John Stone here that can speak to that as well.
Sure, yeah, no, I just have a little written thing. So the reason I requested this to be on the agenda, residents on Lake Street reached out to me concerning the parking spots on Lake Street nearby the, near the, near the bridge. According to residents, parking from that area overlaps onto the sidewalk that really isn't there anymore, and trucks and trucks overlapping the sidewalk are then thus parking into the street, causing pedestrians walking into the street. The residents are concerned with the overnight gatherings in those parking spots with loud music, drinking, smoking, and rubbish. I have had correspondence in emails with the Deputy Chief back in June. Actually, Scott, you and I were on the correspondence that there had been cases of that and people calling and issues with that. So there was added patrol to that area, the Deputy Chief informed us, and also the Board of Health had put out rubbish barrels to control the, the rubbish that was piling up. Third, this one is, I think, for me, the most concerning of it. There has been, it's been discovered multiple drug dealings, exchanges occurring daily there, and the neighborhood is concerned for the safety of the neighbors and the residents who then go to Island Grove, walking their dogs with their kids, playing. And also, I think it's my concern too, just with the barriers of the parking, whether or not, you know, someone by accident, you know, goes over the barriers and then into the water. That's a concern of mine. And then also with the trash, there has been ongoing trash issues with it. People still not putting the trash into the barrels, so thus it is going into the lake. And actually, I was just informed this evening that the Boy Scouts were actually out this weekend cleaning up the trash out of the lake. I think, so, and speaking with the neighborhood, if any discussion of possibly this is town-owned land, if there's a possibility, and I talked to John Stone about it too, the possibility of putting back down a green turf. You know, the neighbors had explained to me that there hadn't been any issues when the green turf was there, you know, kids could have, and people, families could have picnics there. The, the neighbors actually want to put up some picnic tables, so it can be a gathering place. But the, the parking lot seems to be an issue, especially in all hours of the night. And as for the, the drug dealings, that's a huge concern of mine, and I'm sure that's a concern to the Police Department as well. You know, we want to keep people safe. So, so that's why I put it on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
So what are they looking for? They're looking to get rid of all the parking?
Correct.
All of the parking, or just?
Can I answer that?
Yeah, step, step right up to the podium, just state your name.
I have pictures too, if you want to look at anything.
Yeah, just step right up and say your name and address, and then...
Christmas age, 93 Lake Street. We just want the parking put back to the way it was before they put them on this side of the street.
Four years ago.
Four years ago. We just want it back. We want our sidewalk back. You have to walk into the middle of the street to get around all these cars. I don't have little ones anymore. I have, but I do have a dog. They've got their grandchildren they like to take to the park, that you have to walk in the middle of the street. And there's a lot of things that are going on over there that aren't great.
Can we see the pictures? I'm just, I'm a little confused at the...
Yep, and my printer was starting to go. Some are better than others, but...
So the parking's angled now?
So now they pull in. So they took away the grass.
Yeah, there used to be a grass strip there, and we just overly...
Pass pass one behind the other. Parallel, and it was fine, even if they were on the sidewalk. You still had sidewalk, but if you couldn't get on the sidewalk, you could walk on the grass without worrying about being hit by a car.
Parking basically like this here, rather than pulling in?
Yeah, I was on the board when we changed it.
Yeah.
Year, four, five years ago.
So it was, it was like side street, it was parking on the side of the street rather than pulling in?
That gave us more parking, but obviously created some more problems.
Whatever that you put down, and I, it, it's awful. And there used to be a beautiful tree there, and I understand that had a crack in it. I remember it. It had to come down. But now there's a huge sinkhole there. It's just bad. Yeah, you can't fish there as a family anymore. Yeah? So this is, he lives directly across. That's the, the grassy area towards the bridge. The rest of it...
Oh, sorry. Yes, you want to go back to that grassy area?
So where those cars are now, that, that was all grass before?
The whole thing was grass.
I got you.
How many more parking spaces did it add?
Six, eleven.
And what could it hold if we went back to the other?
Same. One behind the other. And we don't find the parking in front of our house. And, oh, they only parked in front of my house when it was swimming lessons time, and they were only there for a half hour.
Would it, it would still fit the same? I feel like it would fit a lot less. Right? I mean...
They parked on both sides of the street, so might be like 12, but it would make the road narrower.
I know we did talk about...
I don't, no one's ever parked on the other side, though.
I know we did talk about that earlier. I, we did ask the Police Chief and the Fire Chief. I know the Fire Chief did bring up that about parking on both sides of the road. He's had issues with getting the fire trucks down there, so...
The only time they park on both sides of the street...
Yeah.
For the fireworks, the night before the Fourth. We have the fireworks, that, that night they were. Lighting, that's it.
Yeah, there's definitely...
It's always one behind the other. And yet, the town put in all that beautiful parking on Park Avenue, but no one uses it because they can pull in and... They don't have that sidewalk. Yeah. But you don't have to, it's not a sidewalk that way either, but I don't know. In the summertime, when we have swimming, a mother pulls in the truck, tackle, too.
Yeah, do you just want to get up here and just state your name and address so we can have you for the discussion? I'm sorry.
She lives in Lambert at 93 Lake Street. In the summertime, when they pull in for swimming lessons, the little kids aren't waiting for mom to get the chairs out of the car or the carriage. They just run behind their car. They're not looking to see if someone's pulling out. And I'll tell you, the young people don't look, they just pull out. And the drug deals that go on down there, I mean, every single night around 5:30, I see the same car going up the street as fast as they can, and...
Have you guys, have you guys reported this to the police?
Pardon?
Has this, okay, I just want to make sure this, yeah, if you could, yeah, absolutely.
Right. And I'm going to give the floor to Mr. White because he sees a lot more than I do.
Doug White, 112 Lake.
How you doing?
Yeah, so I've been in contact with the Police Department, and they actually park in my driveway now.
Okay.
And they try to witness what we see all the time, you know, because it's, it's fast. They, a car pulls in, another car pulls right next to it. One guy will get out, go in the backseat of the other car.
Yeah.
They're there for maybe a minute.
And they go on.
And they, one goes this way on Lake Street, one goes that way on Lake Street. It's all day long. And not just the drug deals, it's the smoke. I mean, I know it's legal now, but it stinks over there. And people ask me, how do I like living in front of a parking lot now? I mean, I've lived there since 1987. I bought the house.
Yeah.
And obviously, we loved living there, but these last four years, it's been brutal.
Absolutely.
It's, the sidewalk is covered, so in the picture, did you see the car?
Yeah.
Blocking the whole sidewalk. You can't, you can't not walk on the sidewalk. And then, as far as people fishing, I, I mean, I help people fix their rails, help the kids bait the hook. All that's gone, because now it's just a processed gravel parking lot where they park their car, and now there's nowhere for the people to sit and fish and have their family. That's all gone. It's just a parking lot. And all hours of the night, we can go there now, and there'll be probably five, six cars.
And there's no signs or anything close to there right now, right?
No.
Okay.
But, and the police do patrol, you know, I, I talked to a new one tonight, Walsh, who's getting sworn in. He said he's, he tries to go by maybe five times a night now. But it's tough to get it, you know, because...
Absolutely.
They hit and run. But it's, it's definitely, it's bad. It's like a destination for drug deals. It really is.
Yeah, they find a spot.
And I mean, I've lived here my whole life. I've never complained about anything, you know?
Yeah.
But it's, it's getting bad.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. John, did you want to get up and speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let the Board know, whatever direction they wanted to go, if they've decided to go back to grass, we could do it in-house. Wouldn't cost any money. Wouldn't be a ton of work.
Would we remove the, the balest out of there, or what would happen?
Yeah, we put them, we put them down four years ago as part of making those parking spots. They were, they were left over from the North Abington Project from probably 10 years ago, so it didn't really cost us any money.
How's the lighting in that area, John? Just as I'm trying to think of a way to deter, I, there's not much we can do about drug deals other than have the police...
The lighting in general is better throughout town since the LEDs were put in.
Right.
I was noticing it tonight as I was driving in. I was noticing it tonight as I was driving in. But, I don't know, it's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want the lights, bright lights that shine into your house, but maybe some lighting in that area might keep the cars away.
I wasn't aware that they were having so many problems with drug deals and everything like that. Whatever the board, whatever direction the board wants to go, we can make it happen. I just wanted to let you know.
I definitely think, I mean, my concern is if we, I mean, if we do it, I would like to see at least one side, that maybe that other side have no parking signs or something because I, I do have concerns about the, the fire chief was talking about the fire truck not being able to get down there.
There's no parking on that side, I'll go to Wilson Place, so when you come around, Wilson Place that says...
Is the, but not on the Lake Street side, correct?
Is there nothing on there?
There's going to be a sign, they're not there anymore.
The drug deal is probably stolen.
John, is that something where you could...
We could put a sign up there.
Yeah. And, I mean, obviously have the police, you know, it's kind of a dual effort here as it goes through there.
So this would be something you'd have to do in the spring?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure it's pretty, it's busy probably right down there right now with the Christmas display there as it is, so it seems, is it more of a warmer weather thing or is it?
Parents use it, parents use it in the summer for strollers.
I did, yeah.
To bring their kids to the pool and to the camp.
I did get some residents that did reach out about that. I talked to you about that, Alex, a little bit, that I did get some residents that use that area to, they said it's the easiest place to get a stroller out and to get children across the bridge. But I don't think changing the parking designation is going to really affect that as much. They'd still have enough room to pull off of the street so they're not...
Yes, sir.
...unloading a stroller in the street.
I believe so.
And as far as the, like a pedestrian walk there, I mean, is there going to be space for it or?
Yeah, we'd have to make space.
All right.
So you'd make a...
Would go back to the way it was. There used to be a...
Sidewalk and then grass.
I read, I just, I mean, I, I read my kids here. I was, grab strollers and bags and...
Yeah.
When people did park that way, there was still sidewalk, but there wasn't. We walked on the grass with the strollers and all, and the fishing rods.
Did you hear that again? There's the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, on this, right on the street, right?
Yeah, so if they could, they just parked on the street, sidewalk's still there, but right now they park, they just, it's still the way sidewalk there. It's still there.
Can I see it, I'm sorry?
It's still, that reprocessed gravel, so there's the sidewalk. It's the park there, so the sidewalk is still all there.
The sidewalk would stay where it is. The cars would be almost further in.
Yeah, and the cars just park out where they still do, even up here.
So the cars would be just like parked on the side of a street, you're kind of on the sidewalk.
Parallel parking.
Okay.
Parallel parking.
Does that help at all?
Yeah, yes. Thank you. So this would be a...
Springtime project.
Springtime project, okay.
Would try to get some grass growing in the spring, bloom and seed.
And how hard would it be if we were to move those ballasts further out, like so they're still there?
We can do that.
I'm just thinking, I know it's still parallel parking, but to keep the safety there and also if, if there are children and people fishing there, at least it's another, some sort of barrier there.
We can move the ballast, definitely.
You think that would be something that's...
Definitely. We could do that.
I'll donate a tree too. My flower mother loves it, it's really nice.
There we go.
Like that, right?
Yeah. Will you plant the tree, John?
We can plant the tree, yeah. We had to take that tree, that tree. It was going to kill someone, yeah. It was definitely...
But I'll put one in there.
Okay.
Awesome, so that's...
So do we need a motion to do that or?
Scott, what do you think on this?
If you definitely want to go forward with the plan, I would recommend you make a motion to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for DPW to restore the green pasture on Lake Street over the gravelled parking that is there now, and also move the...
Ballast?
Ballards. Ballards, pallards?
Ballards.
Ballards, I'm sorry, up to the start of the, on the sidewalk.
Unless also we add a no parking sign.
No parking signs.
No parking signs.
On the residential side of Lake Street.
On the opposite side.
On the residential, yeah, the, okay.
Which you're probably not going to stop on when there's events there, but for the most part.
But they have to get out of their car now and walk to one other instead of just passing over the window.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Home of Fabius, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I just, first we heard of it, so... But before we finish this, I just want to extend my appreciation to John Stone for, for always, you know, being very receptive and all the hard work that you do, and especially with this too and stuff like that. This is, thank you, John. Really appreciate, I know the town appreciates it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
It's my staff. We have a great staff down there.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next on the agenda will be the town meeting webpage review.
Where goes our audience?
Just me.
Perfect.
We'll pull up a little closer so you can see.
We got to turn some of those lights off over there so we can see it.
Still a switch, you can pick the next item you want to go to.
How's it going? You got another light?
Did the wrong one, Scott.
Scott, the one light, can you get that?
Wrong light, Scott.
The one light that's on it?
Oh.
That's better.
Okay, that was...
That one's better.
I shot them all on.
That's only, yeah. Here we go. Uh, no, do the other one.
There we go.
Nope.
Okay, good.
The white one.
How about the white switch? Yeah.
How do those lights turn off?
That's it, not that one.
Oh, I know, they're on the, they're on the clapper.
There we go, Scott. Scott was holding out on us.
Yeah.
All right.
Tony.
Fifteen light switches.
Who's yours?
Okay. So this is, getting ready for the upcoming town meeting that is going to be held in April, we put together a town meeting webpage. Now, this is not our new website that we've been talking about. That won't be ready to roll out until January or sometime. And all this information will migrate over to the new site, but we have been updating content on all the pages and providing new, fresh content, or Toni has actually, she's our website, social media.
Conservation.
Conservation Director of everything.
Zoning.
Zoning, no, we took zoning away. So what you'll see here is, this is for any, anybody, you'll, you'll see there's a tab. Actually, can we just go to the homepage first? So on our homepage, there'll be that new button down there that says Town Meeting Info. And anybody who logs on and clicks onto that, it's going to bring them right to this new town meeting webpage. And as you can see, what we have going down the left-hand side, it starts off with our, there'll be a link for the town meeting, annual town meeting warrant, and there'll be a link right below it for the special town meeting warrant. Go ahead and click on either one of them. Right now, because obviously we haven't opened up the warrant yet, but we will be doing so later tonight, once we start getting the warrants, we will, that's where they will exist, and we'll update them as we change them. So there'll be one, as we said, there's one for the annual and one for the special. Now, the next link down is for registered voters. So anybody who's not sure whether they're registered yet or not, will click on that, and it'll bring them right to our Secretary of the Commonwealth's website, and they can register a vote or find their status right there. Continuing down, we'll have a page for budget and finance information, and that's where we will have information from Sonia, the budget that we handed, I handed out to you tonight, will be in there along with other information, like, you know, where we are with our debt schedules, what projects we have, things like that. And then as we go down, the next one is the citizen petition information. This is, you know, we had a lot of people that were a little confused last year on what the process was if they wanted to do a citizen's petition. So what this does is, is sort of lay out the steps that are involved. Go ahead and click on that Microsoft link. There's a link in there that will actually bring them to our own form, and it'll say, you know, it has the instructions in there on how many signatures they need, depending on whether it's a article for an annual town meeting or a special town meeting. And then when we go back to the, to that page, it'll also explain what the costs are that are associated with that, if we have to do hearings for zoning or anything like that. And as always, we strongly encourage that anybody who wants to do that and, you know, contacts me first, and we'll help walk them through the process. So continuing on down, there will be, there's a couple guides. We have a, we have, we haven't filled in yet the glossary of town meeting terms, just to give it people an idea of, you know, the different things that we're talking about. What is a warrant and, you know, what is a motion and how are they done and things like that. The guide to town meeting, there's an Abington version guide to town meeting that was done by the moderator. You can click on that. And people can get some information here just about, you know, what, what they can find out or any little questions about town meeting and a lot of those terms. There's another one that's actually put out by the Secretary of the Commonwealth. We also put a link up there for that one, in case anybody was interested in this one. And again, this has plenty of, of good information on just what to expect and what is a town meeting's all about. And, let's see, we have a link to a video, assuming that we have to follow the same protocols that we've followed in the past as far as whether we have to wear masks at the school and whether there's going to be any separation. That'll give everybody an idea of what to expect and what we've done in past town meetings. This other link, the public hearings for the upcoming zoning and warrant. So if anybody is wondering if there's any particular articles that they're concerned about and they want to follow along with them, this will give you a link and give you the dates and the agendas for those, for the different boards that may be talking about them. So if it's something that the planning board, the zoning board, or the finance committee is going to be having a meeting on, or the selectmen, when we're going to have a meet on the budget or discuss any of the warrant articles, it will be in there and people will be able to readily find that information. The final one on that side is the roadway acceptance procedures, and this just kind of spells out for any of the developers out there who are just wondering what they have to do if they have a roadway that they want to bring to town meeting. Then we have a list of frequently asked questions somewhere. And these are just questions that, you know, we have found, things that were asked of us, things that are contained within the, within the guides to town meetings, and just things that have come up over the years. And what else do we have on there, Tony? Anything?
I linked the old meetings, so I linked the past two years, I believe. I made the event on the agenda, so it will be notifying everyone once the meeting comes up. So if you go to our main page, you can access it on this calendar and the personal calendar. Each page is specialized per topic. I've put the agendas in, even though there isn't one there, I put the date, when it's going to be, and where it's going to be held. I put previous town meeting minutes in there. I've put a couple pictures just to give people a feeling of what town meeting would be like.
It was last, I think it was last year, Sean Riley had, had did a video of what to expect. Is that on there or?
Yeah, that would be there.
Those are the procedures for attending town meetings.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was the one on, like, checking in and, yep.
Yeah. I don't know if anything's changed or if Sean...
We've decided not to update it yet.
Okay.
So, but it is, it is the exact same one, I think.
Perfect.
It, there may be, obviously the dates and stuff might have to be edited or something, but I'm not sure if you went into that detail on it, but we did, we put a link to that in there.
Awesome.
And, and, you know, Tony's been working to sort of, obviously, it's going to be a lot of information that gets thrown on there when it happens. So tonight we will, I'll ask the board to open the warrant, and, you know, once that starts getting developed and we start getting warrants, then we'll put it up there. It'll be up there. The same thing with the budget, once we've, you know, you know, we've got a preliminary budget, we can stick it up there. Sometime in mid-January, end of January, it'll be updated and we'll refresh it.
Is there a spot on there where we, like, a timeline of events? Like, I think it'd be good for the residents to be able to see, you know, a date, town, the warrant's open, and then like selectmen's meeting or the meetings where we'll be voting on these things or...
Well, that, if they want, follow along, that was what Tony had told me a minute ago.
Oh, I'm just...
The, let's see, yeah, no, go right in.
So if you go to the page, it's, I believe, under town meetings. Public hearing, upcoming zoning warrant, stuff like this. So under here, it has Nancy's email and everything.
Yeah.
All of those are going to be linked, all the meetings. So it's going to be the date of the meeting.
Yeah.
Then it's going to be a small description on the side in the topic section, and then I'm going to link the agenda and the videos, so they can go back and watch the video if they want, and I'm going to keep it in a timeline.
Okay.
So when any of, any of these boards with, as we're preparing, once we know what that schedule is, like the finance committee one, we can populate that one probably next week because we have, the department had agendas that pretty much laid out the nights that they're going to be. So we can put, not so much the agenda, but those dates will be there, and then the agendas as they come up. And then the planning board, once they have articles and they have their dates and agendas, that's where they'll all be.
Okay. Hey, and I, I did see this, I guess I was, we were on different pages. I was thinking of, like, right in the front page, a, more of an overview of, like, just a timeline. Some people aren't so tech savvy to find that, you know what I mean? Or in the front page, if there was a timeline of the actual process of it, but that's fine. I see that it is in there, so...
I think we can come up with something that...
So like maybe one block below minutes that says warrant opened on, and then it would say, like underneath that, expected to close on?
Yeah, next... Yeah, next...
We'll find a place to put that.
Whatever. Next, next step. You know what I mean?
Where we are.
We could probably do it, like, right where it says town meeting to be held April 4th. We could probably put bullets under that that will say warrant opened on the 13th, expect to close it on this date, hearings on this, these days. Yeah, that's probably a good spot for it.
It looks great.
And I would, on the pages that have the warrant articles and the agenda, just make sure it's clear that it's a work in progress. I'd hate to see some...
Well, they're all going to have draft watermarks.
Yeah, draft, you know, not closed, could change, just so people aren't, see something and then show up and say, well, I thought we were voting on this today.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the other part of it is, because this, it'll all, you know, come January, it's essentially January, February, March, those three months. And I think that anything that, that we get for feedback on it will obviously respond to. So if, if, for instance, somebody isn't finding out about planning board, then obviously we're not messaging it right and we'll do something to address that.
So is this live now?
It will be live.
It's live as of right now. I would take it down at any point.
No, I mean, my point is if you can send us all an email and we can all share it so people can, can see it because unless they go to the website, they're not going to know we have it.
Yeah, put like a link, I guess a link on the town social media site and then we could share that.
If you'd like, I usually draft a little slide before and then I always put it in the bios on Facebook. So I can send you all the slide, but I make one if you want to share that or if I post it and email it out to you.
That'd be great. Yeah, I think that'd be awesome.
That way, the more that share, the more people are going to see it. And, and this, I know last year we had a lot of people confused about, you know, citizens petitions and other things. And this is a great job. You guys have done a great job.
Yeah, it's a lot of work put into it.
Well, it's, it's definitely mostly Tony who's doing the headwork. He's, you know, obviously met with, you know, with Liz and Sean and we've all gotten together to kind of, in, you know, lean in to make sure that we've got all the information that we can get out there. I'm sure we're missing something, but we do want to make sure that we...
Yeah, but this is a great start. You know, we, we did get a lot of complaints last year that people don't know about town meeting. They don't know about this and that and everything. And I can see that the town manager's office is starting to get the word out there, so.
Awesome.
And then again, yeah, I've been sharing on Facebook that people can sign up.
Oh, the e-subscribe.
Yeah.
Will we be able to pu, push this stuff out through the e-subscriptions?
Yes, I disabled it today.
Good.
Yeah, great.
So, yeah, anybody who does will push that out to social media too that, you know, hey, hit the sign, you can point out the link.
Oh, the e-subscribing?
Yeah.
So if you, so there's a form you fill out when you first get to the website that says, I want to see this agenda on this board.
Can you bring it up?
It should be.
Yeah, I've shared it a couple of times and some people are saying they're still not getting stuff, but I am, so I don't know.
I thought there was a few, I thought, I've seen a few people say it's only, it's not giving full updates. It's only giving updates for certain areas of the...
Yeah, that's been my experience. Jean Matios is 32 Nile Street. This is very nice and I like the way that you can click in and check on things and everything. It's a big improvement over what's been out there on the town website. One thing I would like to say, though, if you're going to roll this out and this is live, you might want to put a PSA on the cable channels too, so people are aware and that they can see this. Because not everybody clicks on to the town website to see what's going on.
And that was my point, you know, we need to get it out there that people know. So if you call Kevin tomorrow, I'm sure he'll...
Well, Kevin, Kevin, Tony and I actually have a meeting with Kevin next Monday that we're going to put out a 15-minute special edition of Town Manager's Corner.
Wow, that's interesting.
Special episode, huh? It's like an after-school special?
It's, yes.
Does somebody get kidnapped?
Scholastic.
It's kind of like an emergency alert that comes right on. Awesome. Well...
That's a great idea.
That's awesome. That's a good idea. Thank you, Jean.
On that e-subscription, who sends those out? The, once the planning board posts an agenda, is it planning board that sends that out? How does that work?
So if you subscribe to planning board, anything they post that you have subscribed to, such as news announcements, general board bulletins, agendas, minutes, that, once they press the submit button, it goes out as an email through Civics Plus, not through the planning board or anyone else.
Okay. Well, that's what I thought, but somebody complained the other night on Facebook that he signed up for planning board and did not get it. And I get them all, so I don't know.
So what you're saying is once planning board does an agenda, like we would do our agenda, someone signed up for the board of selectmen, as soon as this agenda is out there, it sends them a notification, they have an email that they can pop up and see our agenda?
Right.
Is that what, is that how it goes?
Can I kind of explain it a little more?
Yeah.
So it's more of like a, on our part, we also have to remember to press the e-scribe notification button. So let's say I am uploading these minutes, for example. I can go into here and edit button and it says e-scribe notification. I have to make sure this is checked off for you to get that notification. Otherwise, you will not receive it.
So whose responsibility is it to do that?
So they're, they're currently, she is doing training with all the departments now to, as we roll out the new Civics Plus platform, you know, we're trying to work out those little bugs and you...
Maybe just stress to them when you do.
Absolutely.
I'm being an advocate for, like, self-sufficiency and so...
I mean, that's something that...
Don't forget to do this.
That's something that should almost, it should be automatic. I mean, it should just be a presetting that it's just...
We can ask Civics.
I can reach out to Civics.
I think, I think they, you know, that way it's, no matter what gets posted, they don't have to do that extra step. It just automatically goes. I mean, what's the point of having notifications if, right?
Yeah, and then there's a lot of that that we're trying to, you know, that we're looking at as we review this is, you know, we don't want to offer something in there and that long list of things that you can e-scribe to that we don't actually offer. So we want to narrow it down to try and make it user-friendly and, and, yeah, you know, to the actual people that are actually posting and sending stuff.
And this doesn't tie in at all to any of Abington Cam's videos. Like, so when a board of selectmen video is posted, would they get a notification that a new video is posted?
Yes.
Yes?
The reason you will get it is because I've been setting them up. So if you go to the board of selectmen site, I've been setting them up under a news announcement so I can send out e-scribe notification when the last meeting...
Oh, that's awesome. I think that's another part that we should really do because then people that can't make it, they click right on and they have the video. If they get a notification, they can go right to the video. I think that's a huge plus.
That's a big thing that I'm forward.
That's awesome. Yes.
And then still, once again, self-sufficiency, people can also go to the departments and see it themselves anyway if they go into this.
Okay. But the whole notification part is where I think the, the key to it. If, if all the, well, if we get the boards on...
And, and the other part, like I said, I think Tony will be back maybe on January 10th or the January 27th meeting or the last meeting, but maybe it's the 24th. I'm hoping that we'll have a preview of what the new look of the website is. So I think at that point, you know, any other things that you guys have noticed or nuances that you want to see, it'd be a great time to, you know, give a heads up on it.
I think that's great. Like I said, I, I'd love the, the videos and, you know, if they're connected and can be an alert and notification, the board of selectmen agenda, or all the agendas, I should say. I think that's great. And the actual website for town meeting is, like I said, you put a lot of work into it. Appreciate that and it shows.
And she's doing a photo contest, right?
Yes.
Tell them about that.
So I'll be going around to, I believe, eight different locations, taking a decent amount of pictures, editing them, and then I'm going to find the best 10. And I'm going to send that out on Facebook and you're all going to share and have a great time. And you're all going to take a poll and vote. And I'm going to see if I can set it up through Facebook to see who's going to vote on what to be the best picture. And that would be the new website background. So our new sneak peek for the website, I guess, that I'm going to give out, that I don't know if I showed or shouldn't, is that each page, see how we have a solid background, kind of bland, kind of boring?
Yep.
Each time we go back into the website or refresh it, you're going to get a new picture.
That's awesome. That'd be cool.
Yeah, and it, there's a lot more. It's a, it, it's just a much cleaner look and a lot more user-friendly on the new one. You'll, I think you'll all appreciate it. And, you know, the photos too, is we'll also be looking for ideas for photos for the cover of the town report.
I think that's great. There's plenty of places in town for some photos and I think it's going to be a good little contest. And I think that's great to showcase the, the town on the town site in the background. Anything else from the board on this?
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Definitely thank you.
See you in January.
See you in January.
All right. Next on the agenda is request for extended hours on December 31st, January 1st to 1:00 a.m. for Lucy's Pizza Bar.
In years past, we've always, in December, voted blanket, done a blanket motion to all the liquor licenses in town to allow them a 1:00 a.m. for New Year's Eve instead of, because what happens is, but tonight we're going to vote Lucy's and we'll vote yes. And then somebody...
It's going to be January 10th.
Yeah, somebody else will call, they're going to call tomorrow and say, I didn't know we could do this or something. We've always done it in years past, just a blanket. So I'll make the motion to extend all liquor licenses in town on December 31st to go to 1:00 a.m.
Okay, so just, they did also ask for, for January 1st. I think they had an event...
They have an event that night, I think, so...
So two separate motions or...
We could do one for the blanket and then a separate one for Lucy's for the January one or two.
I thought it was January 1st until 1:00 a.m.
Yeah, that, that's how I, I read it. So they wanted this, all right, well, let's do the motion for, the motion I made is still on the table. We can come back to that.
So that's for all licensees on premise?
Yeah, that's, that's how it reads. It's just New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve.
New Year's Eve till 1:00 a.m. And then...
Okay, so we want to take that first, Tim's motion on the table.
A second, yeah.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
And then I think John did mention that they had an event on New Year's Day.
New Year's, that's why...
New Year's Day night. And they like that to be until 1:00, 1:00 a.m. also.
Two nights in a row, huh?
So that would be January 1st into January 2nd.
He doesn't have a 1:00 a.m. license anyway. I thought they...
I, a lot of, and this isn't unusual, a lot of times they, the Alcohol and Beverage Commission allows them to 1:00 a.m., but they put their own restrictions when they apply for their licenses, saying that, hey, we're only going to be open till 11:00. And it gets memorialized.
Right.
He should...
Yeah, I, I, I always recommend people put in all your...
As far as the special event on January 1st, I mean, I trust John and I'll probably give him the vote, but I'm concerned that we have no idea what the event is. I don't want somebody just coming, oh, I have an event that night.
It's a bad precedent to start if we...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said, John's been a great business owner in town and I, I'll tend to trust him on this one, but it, I'd like to get more information going down the road if somebody requests him.
Do we, what about a motion in, with a follow-up from Scott to final approval?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him if it isn't, you know, something...
I mean, I'm sure, like I said, I'm sure it is. I just worry about the precedent.
Well, he should probably actually look into changing it.
Changing his license.
What were you going to say, Alex?
I see what the event is that Lucy's Pizza Bar and Timberlands have posted on, on social media for the actual event. But do we want to wait to actually hear from John? I mean, I know John's a great...
You're not going to meet again until January 10th.
You're not going to meet again. So we'll just, we can, we can motion to accept it pending approval from Scott. Scott can reach out to him and just make sure everything's, that's what he wants.
Say a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the extended license on January 1st to 1:00 a.m. pending approval of the town manager.
Motion will be a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Next, request to approve St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 20th, 2022. So you did something in your packet, giving you some information. Let me see.
Looked at, it looks like the same.
It's pretty much the same as they've been doing for about 150 years.
Yeah, no changing.
So St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee, right, will ask permission for the 31st annual, 41st annual St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 20th, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. Current plans call for the parade to begin on Washington Street, Abington Center. The route will follow Washington Street to Adam Street to Route 58 to Route 139, taking a right onto North Ave to Railroad Street. Parade will turn right onto Railroad Street to the New England Art Parking Lot to disband. We hope Board of Selectmen will be able to participate and help us make this St. Patrick's Day Parade a big success. As always, we want to thank you for your consideration and assistance.
Make a motion to accept and approve the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Sunday, March 20th, 2022.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And it is customary that the newest guy on the board buys all the candy that we give out.
That's always been the way.
Mr. Hagerty?
Could, cost me $75 this one yet.
So not only does he not get the, the update that we're all wearing our cover overs tonight, I have candy too.
It's a pullover.
There you go.
And you have to carry it.
It's a pullover and yes.
As we run out, you have to refill up.
It's not that bad. It's a one-time thing.
You know what? I'll get the Grinch to do it. How about that?
There you go. He's green.
All right. There we go. So that's approved. All right, the next up is appointment to Conservation Commission as associate members. So in your packet...
Members? How many members are we looking for on associates? Just one.
Well, you, you have the ability to appoint whatever number of members you want to. And you do have multiple requests.
There's one associate now, correct?
There's one associate.
Yes.
Yeah.
Camarada? Camerota?
We always had two or three associates, which I don't think's a bad idea. So get people learning. So as people get off the board, then you can move them up.
This would be the second one that we...
This would be the second, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, so this would be two.
So I'm here, I'm...
So the candidates are...
So we have two candidates. We have Doug Erickson and we have Kathy Creighton.
And Daniel Eddy.
Three.
Three.
And the other one, yeah.
One's no...
Daniel Eddy.
Doug Erickson, Doug Erickson.
Kathy Creighton and what's the other one?
Doug Erickson.
Doug. They were both at the last meeting.
Kathy, Doug, yeah. And...
So we have three.
None of them are here to speak tonight.
But I am here.
Did you want to speak on it?
Yes, I do.
I am missing the...
With the permission of the chairman, you can.
Yes, you can step up. I'm missing the, is it the Dan Eddy one?
I have...
Yeah, I don't know why I don't have this one in there.
Shall I speak now? You know who I am. Jean Matios is 32 Nile Street. As just recently becoming a voting member on Conservation, I know I have a lot to learn. I did attend my first class, got my one point already and plus we had a Zoom meeting last Tuesday, which was awesome because Andrew Point is just such a fountain of information.
There is a lot to learn.
There is so much to learn. So this is going to be my opinion of who I think the associate member should be. It may not be popular among the board, but I feel that Kathy Creighton is so knowledgeable. She spent many years on this board. She is knowledgeable. She is a professional. She is honest and she will do what the regulations require us to do. And she would have my full support because I would need somebody like her because she has been on the board, like you were, Mr. Bizanson, for such a long time. You know what it takes. And she would be an asset to the commission. Doug is new. He's the one that lived on presidential. He would be my second choice. And I would ask that you would please consider my opinion. Thank you.
We definitely take your opinion.
Absolutely appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we have three applications. Want to obtain a motion if anyone wants to make one?
I'm not sure we want four associates. You know, it's too bad we couldn't...
Honestly, with the board's new right now, I would keep it as small.
Keep it tight.
Yeah, I would keep it small. And then if we, if Dave would like to add on later, I'd consider it.
Definitely.
Mr. Chairman, after reviewing all the applicants, and we have heard from two of them at our, at our last, our previous meeting, and I'm very inclined to agree with Jean on, I think we're definitely going to need a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. And Kathy Creighton definitely has the resume for it. And I think she would be, as Jean said, you know, a tremendous asset to the Conservation Commission. So, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to appoint Kathy Creighton to the Conservation Committee as an associate member.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second just for the point of discussion.
Okay. Motion in a second. Further discussion on, Alex Hagee's motion.
I agree, I agree with everything Alex said. And Kathy actually showed, showed me a lot last week when she stood up and let Jean take the spot.
I was.
I was and I, she's, she's a nice lady and it was, it was, it showed, it showed me that she really does want what's best for the board and the people on the board. So...
That's very impressive.
I agree.
All right. So we have motion, we have second. Any further discussion on that? If not, we'll close it up. Okay. All in favor of Alex Hagee's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you for a very impressive, very...
Congratulations, Kathy. Kathy will have to come in and see Leanne Adams shortly to get sworn in and to get what she needs and brought up to speed, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect.
You. You're not going to stick around?
It only gets better.
Okay.
All right, so next up, number nine, vote to approve...
Which would you like next?
...interim loan from the state revolving fund for sewer, sewer force main project.
Yeah, that, obviously, that's for the force main that we just did. So this is just obviously approving the interim loan through the state revolving fund.
I'll make a motion. Then we approve the interim loan from the state revolving fund for the sewer force main project.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. All right. Number 10, vote to execute the grant agreement with Plymouth County to apply for and receive funds from the ARPA grant as a sub-recipient.
This is just yet another vote to authorize us to accept funds from Plymouth County and enter into the grant agreement with Plymouth County relative to the ARPA funds that have been submitted to them, that they're distributing to us.
Scott, how much, so what would be hypothetically coming to the town of Abington?
Without the number, I'd hesitate to, but it'd be over $2 million.
Okay.
Yeah. And it'd be over a series. It's, it's over four years.
Oh, for sure.
They have a good amount of it now, um, but it isn't, it's something that, um, we don't have to attack right away.
Uh, I will make a motion, um, to execute the grant agreement with Plymouth County to apply for and receive funds from the ARPA grant as a sub recipient.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next discussion, a possible vote on selectmen's policies. So, this one seems to come up every meeting and we've continuously pushed it off.
Yeah, well, we kind of worked on it last time and I thought we made some good in-ground, so do we have a final draft written up that we're going to go with?
No, because I believe what everybody was going to do is send us what their, you were going to merge your, your bullet points with Mr. Hagerty's bullet points and make anybody else who's going to send me what their.
So I have not done that yet.
Neither have I.
So.
Would you think maybe we could be more productive if we made a subcommittee, um, to go through our selectmen's policies and then kind of present them all at once to the board? It may be like a six-month working subcommittee, but instead of trying to do them at our meetings when we have 16 agenda items, and I think we tend to push it off because we have so much other stuff going on that maybe a two-person subcommittee could work together.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, not a bad idea.
To work on selectmen's policies. Not that I'm volunteering to be on a subcommittee, I'm just saying.
Your idea?
You guys look like you needed more work.
I do policies and procedures all day long, eh? It would just be an extension.
I mean, you must do a lot of thinking on your truck rides for work.
That's my nap time.
So, yeah, is that something that the board would like to look into making a subcommittee?
Who wants to be on the subcommittee?
Is there any?
Find out, do we want a subcommittee? Do you guys like that idea?
I think that's a good idea. I'd be on the subcommittee.
Okay.
I'm fairly familiar with.
If there's no other volunteers, I will volunteer to be on it.
I'm more than happy to volunteer.
So it's the 18?
Yeah, sounds good. Hopefully we'll be better than, with this than cornhole.
Yeah, well, I was good with that. It was my partner.
Someone experienced in the, the new members, so it's a good way to learn the policies, procedures.
And he'll be bringing me candy.
Right, he has to buy the candy for the subcommittee meetings too.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So now we continue living it.
The subcommittee will be the Alex and Alex, right? The 18. Okay.
And don't forget those do need to be posted.
Do we need anything on that? Do we need a motion or we, uh, we go with that?
I'll make a motion to form a subcommittee to go over the selectmen's policies and procedures and also include the selectmen's liaison policy.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Just like that, then we've got two things off the agenda.
So I roll.
So all right, number 13, annual license renewals.
Approve everybody. All right, let's move on.
You have it. All right, do you want to take this page by page?
Yeah, page by page usually the best.
Yeah, um, let me just get on that page. What are we doing for ourselves?
Yeah, these are all nothing, so we'll start with page one, I assume. Uh, AJ Equipment Repair down to Route 18 Autobody.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to, um, we can do that with the exception of LA used cars.
With the exception of LA, then I'll make a motion to approve the license renewals for AJ Equipment Repair down to Route 18 Autobody with the exception of LA used cars pending, um, paid taxes and proof of insurance.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, I'll make a motion to approve LA used cars, um, pending the approved, uh, pending paid taxes and proof of insurance.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstaying.
One in central. Okay.
Page two, I'll make a motion to approve Abington Ale House down to Ole Ole Cantina. Business, not going, that's fine. Um, Abington Ale House down to Ole Ole Cantina, um, pending paid taxes and proof of insurance.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Third page, right Porto Fino's Italian Kitchen through Encore Limousine.
Make a motion to approve Porto Fino's Italian Kitchen through Encore Limousine pending paid taxes and proof of insurance.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. All right, number 14, vote to open special and annual town meeting warrants. Scott was probably going to get some paperwork.
So how long will we leave the warrant open for? Or just vote to open it and to close at a later date?
I believe that's what it is.
We were looking at four weeks before town meeting would close it this year, but. Did you want to wait for Scott or?
Yeah, I, unless you want to wait for some data, we can, I mean, we can vote to open it.
I mean, I'd vote to open it immediately.
Yeah.
I mean, the votes are closed.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't put that on this motion usually. I'll, I'll make a motion to vote to open the warrant for the special and annual town meetings effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Give a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, next is vote to approve request for refinancing of 26 George Gillespie Way. Don't think we have anything.
So that, um, that is, um, George Gillespie Way was a 40B project. And, um, I don't know the details on this particular piece of property, but what happens, as I understand it, 40B has to remain 40B for so many years, so you can't get an affordable housing at $100,000 when everyone else is paying $300,000 and then immediately sell it and make a profit.
Okay.
It has to, Rick, do you know how long it has to remain?
It's, it depends on the project and what your financing requires.
Yeah, so, um, basically it has to go to the governing body, which is us, to approve a sale.
Okay.
And, um, I guess they're just looking for refinancing. So, um, I would make the motion to approve the request for refinancing of 26 George Gillespie Way. I'm not sure if it's a sale or what they're doing, but they need our vote in order to do it, and it's, um, bound by state guidelines anyway.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll second.
Okay.
Scott, I did the town manager's report. You're good.
How'd it go?
You're pretty good.
Do you just want to, we have a motion in a second on, uh, George Gillespie Way. Is there any?
Do you want to, um, say anything on that?
Um, yeah, just that, you know, it, it came in sort of a last-minute request. Um, they're doing some refinancing. It must be an, an affordable unit and they probably a 10-year-old 40B development.
At least, yeah.
So it requires our approval and then it's, um, gets approval from Department of, uh, from DHCD. So this is just the first step in it.
Okay, that's just a refinance?
Yeah, we're listed as a co-monitoring agent with DHCD.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous, and now we have the town manager report.
So I'm assuming you voted to open a special and annual town meeting report?
Immediately.
The warrant, effective immediately?
Yes.
And, and.
Your phone ringing right now.
The, the proposed dates for closing those, um, would be February 14th. So, uh, we'll get that up on our new webpage and, and get the message out that anybody who's interested in submitting any articles should do so.
So that, um, any zoning, uh, planning board articles, you still need to hold public hearings.
Yep.
Uh, with the zoning board, and I know you've already started, uh, the planning board's already started the process on some zoning changes, so. So, uh, the planning board will notify the public when they're going to be holding hearings on those.
So that will close on Monday, February 14th. That's the proposed date right now.
Yeah, because that, that would be your, the night that you guys will meet, and I'll ask you most likely to close it on that night, and that gives us enough time to, um, finish it up and, um, get notice out for an April 4th town meeting.
Okay.
So that is our, our schedule. We have started the budget process. Um, I've given you all a, sort of a first draft of our, uh, fiscal year '23 proposed budget. Uh, these, these include all of the, uh, needs of the department heads at this point. Uh, we have not, you know, the, the numbers are very unrefined as far as our revenue numbers go. So we haven't really had a chance to look at that, and we won't know what our, um, what the ask of the school department is yet, and we don't know what the, chapter 70 for, um, you know, uh, in unrestricted government aid funds will be. That won't happen until probably close to the end of January when the governor submits his for his budget. So right now, we're, we're off, um, about $2,003,000, a little over. That's not unusual. It's about where we were when we just did our first draft last year. Um, we're working with the departments. It is a tight year and we have one, you know, we have many concerns and I've brought it forward. Um, we discussed it last year and I think we probably discussed it the, you know, first month that I got here and we looked at that initial budget. Uh, one of the, you know, one big problem that we have is what's going on with our, our trash. I think at some point in time, the, the, um, an override was put into place to fund trash.
You don't use that word yet.
Well, we're going to have to have a discussion on it. We're not looking for one. Um, but what I do want to know, you know, I think we need to really look at what we're doing with the trash, because when you did the override, I think you did it for $1,002,000, I was told. Um, and our current, um, our current annual cost is about $1,004,000. So it's outgrown what you've done, and I think we really have to, you know, and, and, you know, luckily we were able to put it out to bid last year. Um, that saved us quite a bit of money this year. It'll save us money next year over what our past rates were, but it's growing considerably and it, and it puts us in a bad position because it's, it's such a wild fluctuation in those expenses that it, it just, it's just a drain on the budget. It's already a drain well beyond what the anticipation was when you did the override. So we just, we have to, we have to have a conversation. We all have to look at, um, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and if there's ways to improve on how we're collecting it, um, how much we're recycling, if we should be taking it out of the budget and doing it as a user fee. Um, there's, there's all sorts of discussions, but we have to have it and we have to have it over the next few months. It's going to be a, a very big consideration. Uh, we're also looking into our healthcare costs and our, our health insurance costs. We're trying to, um, do what we can to, to keep those down. Again, that they, they grow at a rate that's higher than our, our revenue growth, so. It's, 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 it's going to be a difficult year, but, um, again, you know, we were here last year at this time and probably the year before, so we'll, we'll continue to refine it and work on it. That's really all the good news I have for tonight.
No, that was great news.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of.
Merry Christmas.
Things you can look at with that, but.
Um, in the only, you know, the other, other news is we did have a meeting where as we had talked about, last week we set up, or last meeting we had set up a, a subcommittee uh, that met with the police chief and the fire chief and myself to start discussing, um, you know, um, just what our emergency management plans are and, and what to do and how to, how to deal when we have these situations, whether it's a, um, you know, hurricane where we're out without power for three days or, you know, uh, something worse that could happen in the wintertime where we would be, you know, without power for several days or whatever sort of problem or disaster might come our way. So it was, uh, it was a good discussion, a good start. Um, we have some more discussions to have on it, but, uh, we are working in a positive direction, I think.
Yeah, I, I know Mike will echo what I'm going to say, but I think it was a very productive meeting. Um, everyone is very involved with this. There's a lot of great ideas. I think it's, it's not a, an overnight project. Unfortunately, it's going to take some time, but I think, uh, there's definitely some energy and I think we saw some positive things and keep on moving forward with it and, you know, so the residents just know that we are working on this and, you know, trying to improve any way we can with, keep in mind that we are a small community and it is tough with volunteers and everything else, so, um, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to get stuff done, but we're trying to figure out how we can do it the best way possible and what we can improve on and, and everything else.
It's refreshing to see the two departments working together.
Yes, and that was a, I mean, that was a, a, a piece tonight that, you know, both departments talked about is that they've been working very well together and, and, uh, you know, this smooth transition with the police chief, um, so they really feel that they're, you know, cohesive and it's, it's really good right now, so they're, they were very appreciative of that and I think they're appreciative of this meeting and moving it forward as well.
No, they were very receptive to the idea and, and, you know, um, we definitely have two really good people in place right now to work with us, so.
Definitely. Awesome. I will, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Now adjourn.